Good evening. I would like to call to order the Tewksbury Public Schools regular school committee meeting, Wednesday, May 11th, 2022 at 6:00 p.m. At this time, I would entertain a motion to convene in executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with employee groups and/or ongoing litigation and/or discussion of personnel matters. The school committee will reconvene the school committee in open session at 6:30 p.m. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And second.
Okay. And roll call vote. Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. B, Johnny Smith?
Aye.
And Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Okay. And the chair votes aye as well. So we'll convene at this time at six o'clock and reconvene at 6:30 p.m. in open session. Good evening. I would like to call to session our, um, to order our Tewksbury Public Schools regular school committee meeting. At this time, I would like to just read our announcement, which is the May 11th, 2022 Regular and Organizational School Committee meeting will be televised and recorded and may be viewed live on Comcast Channel 22 and on Verizon Channel 34 or on youtube.com/tv, Tuxbury TV. Under the open meeting law, the public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of an open session at a public meeting. At this time, I would ask if anyone is recording tonight's meeting to please identify themselves. Seeing nobody, we will now stand for the Budge of Allegiance. Ms. Bea Joni Smith, if you could lead us, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united by individuals with liberty and justice for all.
Well, this is so fantastic to see so many people here today. So, thank you all for joining us. We do have some recognitions tonight, and I will turn this over to Mrs. Regan, who will be able to introduce some of our students that are here with us.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee, and to all of our guests. What an honor it is to have our amazing student athletes with us tonight. In just a moment, our athletic director, Mr. Ronald Druin, is going to talk about the many successes and achievements of these athletes. And then, following that, we'll have our Tuxbury High School Titans, our robotics team, come up and be recognized as well with a follow-up presentation of their robot, Num Num. So, without any further ado, Mr. Druin, if you could come up to the podium and have the coaches and students that you recognize in each of those groups join you. Are you going to...
Hockey team, right?
Yep. They can flank both sides?
Sure.
And then, I would just ask each of the groups, Jason Marshall, our videographer, will get a picture of each of you. So, when that time comes, I'll just ask you to turn to Jason, and he'll get a picture to go up on our website. Thank you, Mr. Druin.
Thank you. Thank you for having us tonight. Our hockey team was the MIA Division II Massachusetts All-State Champions. Tremendous year. They were ranked first, a new system this year, where the state went to a power ranking system. They were ranked first all year long, kind of had a bullet on their chest all year long as a target for everybody, and they handled it with relative ease all season long, staying in that number-one spot. Went on a five-game run in the state tournament, where they defeated Melrose in the round of 32. They defeated Long Meadow in the round of 16. They defeated Silverlake High School in the round of eight. They went to neutral site, and they defeated Ducksbury in double overtime, which was just a tremendous game. And then, in the state finals at TD Garden, they defeated Canton 3-1. This team has been a pleasure to watch all year long, a joy. Our coaching staff, Coach Dougherty and his staff, have been amazing, done a tremendous job with this team. Those guys as a staff have been there for a long time, and they allow each other to coach and handle their position and handle their guys. And they've done a fantastic job with these guys. And our kids have handled themselves with class all year long and played great, and they do a bunch of stuff in the community. They've got a lot of our hockey guys that are involved with best buddies. This team was an easy team to like. It was an easy team to root for. You know, this is from the MIA, not me. Tuxbury brought the loudest and the biggest spectator section to the Garden. If you were there that day, the place was jammed in red. It was awesome. So, very proud of these guys. Massachusetts State Champions, our boys hockey team. Thank you very much.
Mr. Sullivan is now going to read a resolution of recognition.
It's my great honor to have the school committee read this resolution. I'll recommend it to the class, find quality, young student athletes. You guys were awesome representatives. Don't set that pattern. Couldn't do your work. I see you red. You did the Tom ride. You did yourself the proud of yourself. With that, whereas the Tuxbury Redman Boys Ice Hockey Team demonstrated hard work, sportsmanship, perseverance, and character throughout the 21-22 season, its members include Katie Connors, Jason Cook, Dave Kalber, Andrew Delapiano, Nicholas, The Chuccio, Colin Madden, Michael Connors, Ryan Flynn, John McCucci, Billy Dougherty, Andy Cook, Cody McCurdy, Cooper Robelot, Tyler Barnes, Sean Lane, Justin Rooney, Aaron Potley, Jeremy Consorgna, Benny O'Keefe, Coldstone, Connor Crammon, Andrew Wangar, and Brady Chapman, head coach Derek Dougherty, assistant coaches Bill Ross, Dave DeRoche, Randy Vois, and Ryan Dougherty, and manager Dave DeRoche, and athletic trainer Chris Mahana. And whereas the Redman Ice Hockey Team was named the MIA Division II State Championships, defeated Canton 3-1 at TD Garden, and were ranked number-one all season long, and whereas the Redman Hockey Team brought great pride, recognition, enthusiasm, and honor to themselves, to their parents, their families, and the Tuxbury Memorial High School and the town of Tuxbury. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Tuxbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the many achievements of the Redman Boys Ice Hockey Team, their coaches, team manager, and athletic trainer on behalf of the Tuxbury School Committee. Congratulations and good luck.
Gentlemen, why don't you wrap around this way, and we'll make sure to snap a snapshot of you from the camera?
There's one too.
Make sure you can see that white camera, so we can see you.
That's great.
Mr. Marshall? Yep. All set?
Awesome.
All right. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, coaches.
Thanks a lot.
Coach, if they could just hang in there for a few minutes to support Jason and Jess and Danny? We have a couple, a couple of scholastics, a couple athletes here that were named scholastics. Boston Herald, Boston Globe, scholastic. I want to recognize three that aren't here. Kayden Connors is not here tonight, wasn't able to make it, and Alex Abagas at this point, and Karina Baron are competing in a track meet. They're two of our better athletes on the track team, and they needed to be. Barica had a night meet tonight, so they were running at 5:00. It was going to be difficult for them to get here. But we do have three of our athletes that were named to Boston Herald, Boston Globe, scholastic. I'll go ladies before gentlemen. And we'll start with Jess Driscoll, Jessica Driscoll. Senior hockey player for the Red Rangers, tremendous leader, tremendous captain, was voted MVC DCL Player of the Year in Division One for the Red Rangers, scored over 100 points in her career, a leader in our building, multiple-sport athlete, was named Boston Herald, Boston Globe, scholastic. You know, clearly the best player on that team, the real goal scorer that they had, carried that team to a state tournament bid. A very, very deserving honor for Jess being named Boston Herald, Boston Globe, scholastic. So, if we could give Jessica a round of applause.
It's truly an honor to be here and present this resolution of recognition to you. Whereas Jessica Driscoll has been named 2021 Boston Herald All-Scholastic and 2021 Boston Globe All-Scholastic for her outstanding performance on the Philip High School, Tuxbury Memorial High School Red Rangers Girls Ice Hockey Team. And whereas Jessica is senior team captain and team captain of the Red Rangers Girls Ice Hockey Team. And whereas Jessica was named the MVC DCL Player of the Year, she scored 70 goals, 30 assists, and over 100 points. And whereas Jessica Driscoll has brought great pride, recognition, enthusiasm, honor to herself, to her parents, and family. Tuxbury Memorial High School and the town of Tuxbury. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Tuxbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the achievement of Jessica Driscoll.
Thank you, Jess. Yep, let's get a picture with you.
What's up?
Thank you, Jason. Thank you, Jess.
Ms. Regan, would you like to have the parents come up? Would the parents come up if they'd like to?
Actually...
Mr. Druin, could the parents come up and take a picture if they'd like to as well, please?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you.
Okay, what's up?
Great. Thank you. Our next guy is a guy that we tried to get in earlier. It just didn't work out with the schedule. But our next scholastic is Danny Fleming. Danny was a senior quarterback, captain for us on the football team, led our football team to a league championship. Danny had 31 touchdowns in 11 games, 31 touchdowns in 11 games. 1,200 yards rushing, 800 yards passing, was the MVC Two Player of the Year, easy choice for Boston Herald, Boston Globe, scholastic. A guy who didn't play a lot of quarterback, and we needed a guy to play quarterback, and he changed his position this year for us, and just did a tremendous job leading that team. Huge game on Thanksgiving to beat Wilmington. Just a nice, nice way, you know, to play your senior year, and 31 touchdowns is a bunch. So, congratulations to Danny Fleming.
It's an honor to present this to you, a resolution of recognition. Whereas Danny was chosen as the MVP, he was named 2021 Boston Herald All-Scholastic and 2021 Boston Globe All-Scholastic for his outstanding performance on the Tuxbury Memorial High School Redman Football Team. And whereas Danny was chosen as the team MVC Two Player of the Year and led his team to the MVC Two Championship. And whereas Danny scored 31 touchdowns, 1,294 yards rushing, and 780 yards passing. And whereas Danny Fleming has brought great pride, recognition, enthusiasm, and honor to himself, to his parents and family, to Tuxbury Memorial High School and to the town of Tuxbury. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Tuxbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the achievement of Danny Fleming.
Mr. Russo, the fast reading is going to score you a lot of points with Jason Cook. He is a die-hard Celtics fan and definitely wants to get home for tip-off at 7:00. So, you're scoring points with Cookie, I'll tell you that, all right? Our last scholastic here right now is senior Jason Cook. Tremendous young man, three-sport athlete, made big impact on the golf team, makes big impact on lacrosse team, and is a captain here for the hockey team. If you know Jason, he's one of the finest people we have in our building, as are Jess and Danny. He's scored 100 points for the hockey team, has been scoring goals for them since his freshman year. First-class kid, Boston Herald, Boston Globe, scholastic. Just a tremendous, tremendous young man, tremendous athlete. He's, if you could, if you could kind of cookie-cut him and say, "This is what we want our student athlete to be," man, Jason Cook would be right at the front, you know? He's an outstanding student, outstanding athlete, and a great representative of Tuxbury Memorial High School. So, Boston Herald, Boston Globe, scholastic, Jason Cook.
I guess I speak fast but not loud enough. So, Jason, it's an honor to be here to present this resolution of recognition. Whereas Jason Cook has been named 2021 Boston Herald All-Scholastic and 2021 Boston Globe All-Scholastic for his outstanding performance on the Tuxbury Memorial High School Redman Boys Ice Hockey Team. And whereas Jason is a senior at TMHS and the team captain of the Redman Ice Hockey Team. And whereas Jason has had over 100 goals scored during his high school career. And whereas Jason Cook has brought great pride, recognition, enthusiasm, and honor to himself, to his parents and family, to Tuxbury Memorial High School, and to the town of Tuxbury. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Tuxbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the achievement of Jason Cook. Congratulations.
Jason, is your family here as well?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Got his brother Matt and Daniel.
Thank you for having us. Much appreciated.
Thank you very much, Mr. Druin.
Madam Chair, as it pleases you, would you like to comment on the athletic teams and athletes that were here before we move on to the next group?
Yeah, I think that would be nice. I actually personally would like to just say how proud I am of all these students. I think this is fantastic coming out of the pandemic, you know, to see students doing so well. It was really a joy to go to that game. I enjoyed it very much. I don't really know anything about hockey, but I absolutely had so much fun. It was just, you know, it was a great, great experience. So, I'd like to say thank you to the families that brought your students here, and thank you to the students for coming. And do any of my other colleagues have anything to add?
Go Celtics!
Yeah.
Okay, so thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Okay, and as I promised, our Tuxbury Memorial High School Robotics Team, the Titans, are here with their coaches, Mr. Scott Morris, Victor Impink, and Josh Nichols. Our coaches are going to describe the successes that this team has had that took them to the New England Championship. And then, as I said, the team will follow up in the presentation portion of our agenda with a demonstration of their robot, Num Num.
Thank you all for being here. This is exciting.
Oh, you're welcome. We're just excited. We haven't been here in, I think, three years. It's been a long time. All right, we got everybody in here now? Okay, awesome. Thank you. I'm just going to point out, everybody's got a little handout. It has lots of little words and lots of little tidbits. It'll tell you a little bit about our program and what we do. We participated in the first robotics program. We are in the New England District. We play two events every year. If we do well at those two years, those two events, we can qualify for the New England Championship, which this team did this year. If we do well there, we can go to the World Championship. It's, I say, maybe the top three most competitive districts in the country. There are thousands of teams that participate. There's over 200 in New England that participate. The competition is fierce. Yeah, it's hard to be at the top. But rather than focus on all these things, I want to focus on the team. The machines you see over here, 100% built by the students, all right? They get some parts in a kit, everything above the drivetrain. They conceive, design, build, fabricate, put it all together, and take it to a competition and compete. It's truly amazing. All right, so, we're going to have each one of the kids come up and just talk a little bit about their experience on the team, what they do. We have a video that we need to show you. We have a video that we need to show you.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm David. I'm a junior on the team. I've been here for about three years. So here at FIRST, we compete in teams of two alliantists. So with three robots on each team, even if a team maybe isn't working with us, maybe even if they're against us in a match, FIRST is all about gracious professionalism, and we cooperate. So if a team, maybe they're broken, maybe they've had really a lot of problems throughout a matches, maybe they're having driver troubles, we work heavily with every other team, even if they're not with us, to make sure everybody we're facing and with is at the best possible level to compete at. Because we don't want to be facing any bots that aren't really ready to compete. We want to be able to be tasked with the best competition. So we built our bot to be really the most durable and the most consistent bot out of any of the bots on the field. And with that, I'm going to hand it off to Eric.
So hi, I'm Eric Impink. I'm a senior here. I've been on the team for three years. And as David said, we work together with the other teams during competition, whether they're with us or against us. And one of the goals for our bot was to be as durable and as serviceable as possible. So this bot's very simple. You didn't see any other game footage, but our style of play is pretty simple and effective. We were able to cycle 10 to 12 balls consistently and climb almost every single time. And the bot was built very sturdily, if that makes sense. And throughout all of our competition this season, not a single part has broken. We have, we've been consistent. We reached our goal, I think. And in the durability, I think we also achieved what we set out to do. Yeah, we were also limited by just a small team. It's a building year for the team, a lot of young, new members, and the limited six-week build period also tasked us to work quickly and effectively. And I feel like we did, we made a really solid bot. So past the mechanics, you need electric, electrical and wiring. So to talk about that, we have Jared.
Hello, I'm Jared. My key, sorry, my major job in the team was to make the design and manufacture the electrical board this year. Its main purpose is to be very organized and concise, so that if a problem was to occur, which none had during the entire season, we would be able to be, we would, yeah, sorry, we would be able to easily find the root of the problem and fix it, so that we wouldn't affect our next match. Given this organization, we were given multiple compliments by various judges during our two, oh, three competitions. This year was a learning opportunity for everyone on the team, given the fact that most of us, it was our first year, and we didn't have much experience with electrical work. So we all learned how to use the proper tools to put together the wiring required to run the robot. However, another necessary component to run the robot is software.
Hi, I'm Will. I'm the lead software developer on the team. Software is a huge, huge part of FIRST. It's what allows the robot to run. This year, we decided to make it a learning opportunity for software. We've added a lot of new features, such as self-driving mode. We've added, we've decided to replace a lot of parts that we previously bought from commercial vendors with our own custom code, which has enabled us to cut costs by quite a bit, making our robot more effective and cheaper. It, code definitely brought some challenges, but our team was able to learn and overcome those challenges, and we made an amazing robot. And with that, I'll pass it on to Ranuka to talk about our businesses and finance and public outreach.
Hi, I'm Ranuka Latte. I'm a sophomore, and this was my first year on the team. One of our main goals this year is community outreach. As you can see, we're not the biggest of teams, and we really hope to improve that. Last year, we reached out to Safe Halloween, which is a local community event that works with the police and fire department. And this year, we hope to reach out to middle school, whether that be middle schoolers currently or rising freshmen, and also our freshman orientation to get a bigger group. With a bigger group, we hope to make a business branch of our team to manage grants, sponsorships, our finances for our team itself. And it's really similar to what other clubs like DECA does. And so we really hope to bring a new meaning to what our team can do.
All right, awesome. I just want to add one more thing. I have a million things to add, but I just want to add, we have Victor Impink and Josh Nichols. Both volunteered their time here as mentors. They both work in industry. That is what keeps our program going. We fund ourselves through corporate sponsorships. So between the three of us and the students and parents, we're out there looking for money, trying to get everything going. We have a budget goal of about $20,000 every year. We didn't get as much this year, but we had a little bit left over from COVID, because we just had Friday night virtual robotics. All right, so I'm going to bring up Josh to close this out, and then we're happy to answer any questions.
I'm Josh Nichols. I've been working with this team for four years now. Prior to that, I worked with a couple other FIRST teams. One of the things that I don't think a lot of people realize about FIRST is just how fierce the competition is. And we went up against, and we beat teams of 80, 85, with 15, 20 Scots and Victors and myself, and hundreds of thousands of dollars in budget. Another team I work with, they have, God, I can't speak to the numbers exactly right now, but you're talking about, you know, seven, eight kids going up and beating teams of 25 coders, 25 engineers, 25 CAD, computer-aided design folks. So seeing what this team did going to districts and absolutely crushing it is impressive in itself, let alone when you look at what they were up against. There's one statistic I love throwing out. I pitch it to everybody I talk to and anybody who's stuck with me in an elevator, and that's 89.1% of FIRST graduates, so kids who have been in the FIRST program in one way, shape, or form, go on to engineering. If you stack that up against the most recent NCAA statistics, you're looking at about 8% of high school athletes going on to college athletics, let alone going pro. Every one of these kids is going to go pro in some way, shape, or form. I've had, I have graduates who work for SpaceX. I'm trying to leverage him to get me a tour of their facility. I've got kids at NASA. I actually have a few kids who didn't end up going on to college. One of them makes 85K a year right now at 24, being a machinist. He started his own machining company. Because every bit of this bot, they made themselves. Every piece of aluminum they cut, every piece of 3D-printed plastic, that's all them. So they're leaving the school, having all of these industry. And, I mean, most of them could outpace me when it comes to coding. Or, yeah, definitely with coding and probably with CAD. And I'm an engineer by day. So that's, it speaks volumes on what the program does and what these kids have been able to pull off this year. So, yeah, is that everything? Did I miss anything? All right, I did well. Beautiful.
Well, thank you. This is outstanding. Absolutely outstanding. But I would love to open this up to my colleagues for any questions or thoughts. Thank you so much for being here. Mr. Parsons?
Sure thing. Yeah, it's very impressive, and it sounds like you guys are competing like underdogs and having to really be scrappy and resourceful, which I always love to hear. That's great. That's all I ever look for in a team. And, you know, thank you for all volunteering your time. I know you all must spend hours, not just one day or a couple of days, but over and over. I know a lot of work goes into these robots. So congratulations, well-deserved. And, you know, thank you for sharing this with us in the community. It's really great to see.
Mr. Sullivan?
Thanks. It's nice to see some of you again. This is my second call round. When I walked in, I was blown away. I was blown away a couple of years ago. I would implore you to go through your channels, because I think this is something that we really should and could look at as a committee to help make sure that we can finance. This is a wonderful program. Anyone that knows me knows I'm a huge sports guy, but I also diversify, realize that kids are learning in different ways. And although that may have been my vehicle when I was young, to learn different life skills, I think you hit it right on the head when you said, "All that the kids are taking out of this." So please, I implore you, like I said, to go through the appropriate channels. You'll certainly have my support to make sure that we continue, to make sure we have these opportunities for our students. So, and thanks again for reaching out, for making the first step. We don't know where anyone's at with the COVID and all that, so I know it took a couple months to get you guys in here, but I'm thrilled to finally have all of you in here, and I wish all of you the best of luck moving forward. So, thank you.
Thanks. And Mr. Russo?
Great, thank you. No, this is fantastic. This is my first experience sort of seeing this. And I, did I hear you guys say it took six weeks to build this?
Six weeks from a piece of sheet, from this plate, a piece of sheet, nothing.
Oh, my gosh. Unbelievable. And so the robots that you have over here also, those are ones that you've done in prior years?
Yeah, that is the 2020 bot, and the bot to the right of it is the 2019 bot.
It's just unbelievable. I guess from my perspective, I've never, I never, you know, I sort of think of this stuff in a trade school, right? I don't think of this in sort of a, you know, the public school system. And so to see this, and all the pieces that go into it, from the engineering, the design work, the manufacturing, you know, there seems like too, I mean, I'm assuming you guys are learning a lot about artificial intelligence probably in this process, which, you know, robotics is sort of that, you know, that's the way these days. So I really applaud you for sharing this with us. And like my colleague said, Mr. Sullivan, I mean, I would fully support, you know, anything that you guys would need in the future, because this is really helping kids develop their skillsets to really take them off after post-high school. So thank you for sharing.
Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
Um, yes, I echo much of what my colleagues have said. I am intimidated and astonished by the level of expertise here as a BattleBots fan. I love robots. I don't know anything about them, and I don't know where I would even start. But I know that my daughter loves the Connect Coder game systems. So she's in fifth grade. I would love to see something like this at those younger levels, to see those kids get exposed to this early on. And they have after-school clubs and programs, and this would be such a great thing to expose them to early, so that they can see if it's something they want to continue with. So I'm blown away. It's amazing.
And the only thing I want to add is I loved the video. Loved the video. So thank you for sharing that. And then also, I'm very impressed that you're kind of forward-thinking in your community outreach and things like that, because more people need to know about this, you know, about your club and your group. And, you know, you're all pretty spectacular people individually, but coming together, it looks like you're even more spectacular. So thank you again for sharing this. And Mrs. Bea Joni Smith will read our recognition, resolution of recognition.
Well, Madam Chair, while Mrs. Bea Joni Smith is going up to talk with the group, I think it's important to know that you don't get that challenge, right? You don't know what the stated challenge is of the robot till what month of the school year?
January.
January. So when they tell you it took six weeks, they didn't know what they were building that robot to do until they knew what the challenge was. And it comes with lots of parameters, but the team works together all up until that point to learn, I mean, and code together. And, you know, we have a purpose-built room here. So this committee and the community has supported robotics, and we'll talk a little bit about how we're supporting it at the younger grade levels, just like you said, in just a minute. But this team has a lot to be proud of. Clearly has built an amazing robot that not one piece had broke during all of those competitions. So there's so much to be proud of.
I need some of you to come look at my computer at home after. So I am incredibly honored to be able to read this resolution of recognition, whereas the TMHS Titans Robotics Team demonstrated hard work, sportsmanship, perseverance, and character throughout the 2021-2022 competition season. Members Connor Fullerton, Eric Impink, Aiden Kuhn, Ranuka Latte, Liam Mullins, Nick Pace, David Penny, Hui Tran, Andrew Yocan, and Jared Woodman, advisor Scott Morris, Victor Impink, and Josh Nichols. And whereas the Titans Robotics Team had worked on creating their robotics since January, and in their first-ever event of the competition season together, they made it to the finals, bringing home their trophy. And whereas, the Titans competed in the Boston Championship and qualified for the New England District Championship in April. The team looks forward to building a new robot for the next year's competition season. And whereas, the TMHS Titans Robotics Team have brought great pride, recognition, enthusiasm, and honor to themselves, their parents, and families, to Tewksbury Memorial High School and to the town of Tewksbury. Now therefore be it resolved that the Tewksbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the many achievements of the TMHS Titans Robotics Team and their advisors. On behalf of the school committee, congratulations.
Bring the team right around to you. Oh, goodness.
Of our gratitude, these are medals from our finalists at the writing competition. Would you like to give each of these?
Thank you.
And while he's putting those, we have the team come right around here and bring Num Num right in front with you, so that we'll get a picture.
The only thing I'm ever getting, the only time I'm getting something from bowling.
I haven't drawn a medal in a while.
I think I want to wear it. Can I wear it?
Yes, matches your friend.
That's great. It's really awesome. I think I'm going to make a lot of noise, though.
Madam Chair, while they're heading out, I did want to comment too on the younger grades at the Lower Elementary School. Had the Future Makers in this past couple of months, and they were building some robots. It's pretty interesting to see the little kids building something small, and then what it becomes when it gets to here. It's awesome.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And moving on, we have our citizens forum, where citizens are asked to, sorry, just a moment. I want to give them an opportunity to step out. Okay. Good evening.
How you doing? My name's Robert Hanley, 2 Hillcrest Road. Hope I'm not a little bit of a buzzkill. They were amazing. All those kids were incredible. I work at a research laboratory, and every year I'm asked about my yearly goals. This is usually supposed to be a simple task, but it is way more difficult than I think it's going to be, because they have to be SMART goals. SMART is an acronym. they have to be SMART goals. SMART is an acronym. The goal should be specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-bound. I can see how this format actually facilitates proper assessment and implementation of said goals and how this information helps both employee and employer. Social-emotional learning has been a hot-button issue of late, so I am trying to become as informed as I can be on the subject. I Googled SEL goals and the first link brought me to the Connecticut Educational Association website. Social-emotional learning goals. SEL goals do not need to be SMART or quantitative in nature. The requirement for a standardized indicator has been waived for this year. Both indicators may be non-standardized. If you apply the SMART acronym to SEL goals, the entire philosophy becomes even more nebulous and unscientific. Specific. SEL guidance is incredibly vague and subjective. Measurable. As far as I can tell, there are no baselines or scores established for individual students prior to the incorporation of SEL or after. How do we know that SEL is working as intended? Are there negative side effects that are also not being measured? Achievable. If we assume that the goal is for students to improve oneself, whether it be self-awareness, self-management, or even social awareness or relationship management, are our T-shirts qualified to assume the roles of psychiatrists, psychologists, parent, pastor, or life coach? Relevant. How is SEL directly relevant to academic achievement in elementary-age children? Does more time spent on SEL mean less time spent on academics? Time-bound. This portion is simply irrelevant if the goals are not specific or measurable. We all place a different subjective value on the concepts associated with social-emotional learning. Some see tremendous value in it while others find zero value. But one objective truth gets lost in the debate over its value. The objective truth is that as we spend more time, thought, and resource on SEL, we inevitably spend less time, thought, and resource on traditional academics, which give our children the building blocks they need in order to tackle complicated, nuanced social issues when they reach an age of maturity. There's plenty of anecdotal evidence over the last decade that high school graduates are less prepared for college and the job market with each passing year. There is an inverse relationship between students' academic preparedness and mental health and the introduction and implementation of social-emotional learning. I am well aware that correlation does not always equal causation, but I'm also well aware that sometimes it does. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hanley. Okay, and seeing nobody else rise, we'll move on. And Mrs. Bea Joni Smith, for the approval of minutes, please. Sorry, I will say this out loud.
Sorry.
Yeah, at the top, it will have exactly how you read it.
All right.
In the packet.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Madam Chair, if you will, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve the April 13th, 2022, regular meeting minutes.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? No one opposed, we will move on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sorry. To the submission and payment of bills.
This one I'm prepared for. All right. I move the submission and payment of bill in, for the payroll period ending April 14th, 2022, in the amount of $1,495,479.75.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, this is roll call. Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye as well.
Okay, I move the submission, payment of bill for the amount for the payroll period ending April 28th, 2022, in the amount of $1,498.551.77.
Okay, Mr. Russo, how, do we have, that was your move? Do we have a second?
I'll, I'll second that.
Thank you. Mr. Russo, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye as well.
And Madam Chair, one other order of business. We also think, I would like to make a motion to approve the April 13th, 2022 reorg meeting minutes as well.
I'll second that one as well.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and the motion passes. And then we will move to our superintendent report. But just before that, I would like to recognize, for anyone that missed our special school committee meeting on May 5th, I'd like to share that the committee voted to appoint Mrs. Regan to the position of superintendent. Mrs. Regan, I would like to express my congratulations to you in that I look forward to working with you in this new capacity. I appreciate that you spoke very much during these like last couple of weeks about how you will always put students first. You will listen to staff and families, and you will do all that you can to move our district forward while supporting the needs of the students and the staff. So for right now, I appreciate your work and your effort while you're managing two positions. And I'd like for you to share any comments you might have.
Yeah, Madam Chair, members of the committee, first and foremost, I can't tell you how humbled and proud I was as I listened to your deliberations last Thursday afternoon. I certainly appreciate the intense responsibility you all had in choosing the next superintendent of Tewksbury Public Schools. You had four very highly qualified, if I might say so myself and in my humbled opinion, highly qualified educational leaders to consider. With that, it's certainly my honor to serve as Tewksbury Public Schools' next superintendent. I appreciate the support you have offered me. I appreciate the support of our school community and our town community as you were making that decision. I certainly look forward to our continued work and the continued work I have with our entire school community on behalf of all of our students. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So, whenever you're ready for your report?
I will continue with my updates. Well, right in line with the robotics presentation, I want to recognize two of our Ryan School students. You heard the enthusiasm, the enthusiasm that comes out of our STEM programming. And that starts really young through the support of our committee and our educators in Tewksbury. That starts really young in our elementary grade levels. Well, the two Ryan School students have been moved on to the National Invention Convention due to their placement in the Massachusetts Invention Convention. So let me just give you a little update. Students worked on their inventions in iSTEM, Orion School, fifth and sixth grade class. Each student team was required to identify a problem and complete an invention log to record their ideas and process. And then they created a virtual tri-board and video to be submitted to the Mass Invention Convention. We have two students, Brennan Howell, and who submitted a grade, from grade six, submitted a computer binder holder, solving the problem of kids dropping their laptops all of the time throughout the school class. Evelyn Goldstein also created an attendance tracker with the use of a microbit to help teachers, specifically her dad, solve for the problem of forgetting to take class attendance in his classes. So both of these students qualified to move on to the National Convention, which is in Michigan. And I have to say, while this is not a school-sanctioned field trip per se, the students and their parents do intend on attending. We certainly wish them well in this next leg of the competition, and we can't wait to hear about it and share it with you, the committee. I would be remiss if I didn't thank you and share my deepest appreciation and gratitude to our grade five, six iSTEM teachers, Ms. Eileen Lindsay and Ms. Kim Hilson. They are truly inspiring our future inventors, our future robotics team that you saw in front of us today. They make STEM learning fun and relevant to our students, and we look forward to hearing more about that process for those two students. Okay, next, in my updates, sorry, I got lots of tabs and notes here. And I'm, I'm doing updates for two here. But I certainly need to recognize that last week was Teacher, Staff, and Principal Appreciation Week. You have some pictures in your packet that just show the many ways our school community and our pack recognized our staff and our principals. Today is also National School Nurse Appreciation Day. So while these national days or weeks come along once a year, it's an understatement to say that we only appreciate these folks, you know, one day. So we, if you missed National Teacher, Staff, and Principal or National Nurse Appreciation Day, please feel free to reach out and honor those folks in our schools. I'd also like to honor and recognize three of our veteran teachers who are inspiring new educators coming to the profession. And that is Alexis Bosworth, Christine Cremen, and Jennifer Merzowsky. As I said, they mentored aspiring teachers this school year. And you see in your packet, Merrimack College has awarded them one graduate-level course for the work they did with our new teachers. Also in your packet, annually, we are required to file an outdoor integrated pest management plan with the Department of Agricultural Resources around mosquito control language. Our IPM coordinator here is Mr. John Marshan. He files this plan for us, and we thank him for doing that. We are actively planning summer programming through enrichment and through our Special Education Department Summer School Program. Parents will be receiving more information for their children on that program. There may be additional summer school programming coming out to parents in the next couple of weeks. We did not have the level of grants that we had last year for all of those Acceleration Academies, but we certainly do have some teachers and staff creating some proposals to bring students in for extra help throughout the summer. You can see this flyer that's in your packet has many enrichment activities, including Alphabet's program, our 21st Century Penguin Pride, and Doing program. We also have a pro, a link to a summer camp and activities guide in the greater Lowell area with many free and for-pay activities. We'll continue to share these opportunities through our Student and Family Support page. All right, so there are some opportunities to recognize school volunteers and outstanding educators. So one of the, those awards is the Annual Ginsburg Family Award. We welcome families or members of our school community to fill this award nomination out. There will be another award nomination coming out, which is the Palomino Academic Excellence for Educator Award. And then you can see also in here, we're giving our students a heads-up on two essay contests that you are very familiar with, The Patriot Pen and The Voice of Democracy. Both of these essay contests can garner huge scholarship awards for our students. Our students do very well in this, so we put that in our packet. Students, if you're a writer and this is a topic of interest to you, please get a head start on that essay contest over the summer. And then what you also have in your packet is our annual reappointment notice. So this, this notice is for some of the roles. Now, we have staff in our school system, and you can see that annual appointment. In your approval of the consent agenda, I hope that will approve this reappointment notice. Just as a reminder, our teachers and other educator positions, they get annual renewal letters at the end of the year. So that's why they're not all listed for our new members. You may not have seen that. They're not listed here because their, their process is a little bit different. Okay. And what I have for you are some just quick updates on two of the trips that happened over April break. And I asked the administrators that went on the trips to just give you a little update on how the trip went. So this one is an update from principal-elect of the Tewksbury Memorial High School, Andrew Long, on the Costa Rica trip. He says the Tewksbury Memorial High School trip during April break to Costa Rica was, and I'm definitely going to say this wrong, "Pura vida," which means pure life. 16 students and four staff had a great week of weather to enjoy ziplining, snorkeling, hiking through a volcanic national park, whitewater rafting, visiting iconic waterfalls, and mountain hot springs. The wildlife was abundant, and the travelers were greeted by a variety of monkeys, birds, and more, including some sloths. The themes of sustainability and environmental awareness were interwoven into activities throughout this memorable week. And then from our, and I do not see Mr. Bernard still in the audience, Mr. Bernard gave us this. The trip to the national parks was, in one word, awesome. I think it's fair to say that everyone's expectations were far exceeded. The students were fantastic, and so much fun was shared within this experience. As a reminder, next Wednesday, May 18th, our eighth graders will be embarking on their trip to Washington, DC. With COVID numbers slightly on the rise, I can tell you the next few days will be closely monitoring and watching and working with individuals that will be going on that trip. Our lead nurse, Kelly Constantino, principal Ware, and Mr. Gillespie are working, as I said, individually with all those families, you know, as we have had some scares, I guess you would say, as we get closer to that trip. All right, we are currently finishing up our math MCAS in grades three through eight. Again, many absences have occurred this, this week, and our principals will be working with families to make sure all of our students have makeup time for that MCAS test. And then I'm hoping you had the opportunity to go to our 38th Annual Art Show, which was last Friday and Saturday. Words just can't explain how amazing the artwork was from our students. This is, we're back in person. And honestly, if art is healing and art is good for the soul, you know, you walked away healed and, and feeling pretty healthy because it was just amazing to see our budding artists shine. I'm going to read you the Best of Show names from each school in a minute. But before I do that, I really have to thank all of our fine and performing art teachers for their inspiration to all of our budding artists. And whether students made it into the art show or not, they truly pull out the artists and every student through their classes, so we thank them for that. Our Best of Show, 38th Annual Art Show, 2022 winners are Fiona Ho, a senior here at the TMHS, Evan, I'm sorry, Eva Delgado, a win seventh-grade student, Shay Post, Ryan sixth-grade student, Scarlett Muse, Trahan third-grade student, Isabella Lapordo, North Street fourth-grade student, Marcus Johnson, Doing second-grade student, and Karina Farrier, Heathbrook first-grade student. Congratulations to these Best of Show winners, to all of our students that placed, and certainly all of our students that were presented and performed at our art show. We will be posting the Best of Show artwork on our website by the end of this week. Okay. And then one more real good piece of news that I want to update the entire district on. And I, I see our new district Director of Literacy in our audience. This woman is a talented administrator with a lengthy resume in educational PD planning, literacy leadership, varying grade-level planning for literacy. She has served as a literacy coach in her past work and a current leader of a elementary ELA pilot program. This is none other than our current Heathbrook Principal, Ms. Felicia Chonavich. She will begin that role of District Literacy Director on July 1st, certainly serving out the rest of her school year as principal at the Heathbrook. So I know you will join me in welcoming and congratulating Ms. Felicia Chonavich on this new role that she'll serve for the district. Thank you and congratulations, Felicia. And that concludes my updates at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Russo, any comments?
Actually, just, just one on the enrichment programs that are being offered over the summer. Is there, are there limits to that? And I think you mentioned something about grant funding that may not be available. Can you just maybe comment on that?
Sure. We had an abundance of grant funding that paid teachers quite well to do what Acceleration Academies, if you will. And it focused on certain grade levels in math and certain grade levels in ELA to really try to fill some of the learning loss that we saw from last school year. It's still questionable whether we may be receiving some of those grant dollars, but even if we don't, we are looking at proposals from our teachers at varying grade levels to welcome in students for some level of summer school. We do have a special ed summer school. Students are eligible for that, will be communicated to through Special Ed Department. But we do have lots of enrichment, and Alphabet also does. You don't have to take Alphabet on every day throughout the summer. It can be, you know, just attend certain days or certain events. So there are a variety. There are a lot of parameters to each individual opportunity. And we welcome people to go onto our website and, you know, learn a little more, or call us, and we'll certainly guide a family through what's available.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
No questions, but I was going to bring it up later, but because you were talking about the Teacher Appreciation, Staff Appreciation Week, I did want to just thank the PACs and the families that volunteered and donated tons of time and effort to making sure that the entire staff at every school had a great week, from lunches and breakfasts and coffee and, and gifts and chalk and whatever else it might have been. I did just want to call that out one more time now. I was going to save it till later, but I just wanted to also.
And their artwork's amazing. I mean, that, that didn't just happen in five minutes. So when you say time invested and with care and love, truly, people appreciate the work our teachers our teachers and our principals and our school staff do. And this artwork is just a small, you know, fraction of all the ways that they showed that. Thank you, Ms. Bea Joni Smith, for saying that.
Great. And Mr. Parsons?
I have no other comments. Good luck to our sophomores taking math MCAS next week.
Yes.
Other than that, thank you for the update.
And Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, just quickly, I know we had over 100 students in those accelerated learning programs in the summer. So if we can continue, I know, understand everything is a cost, but if we could get some acceleration programming, I'm thrilled to hear that you're reaching out to the staff to see where it's needed most, but, you know, going through the process and seeing the other districts and realizing we're not the only one dealing with academic loss and regression, I think it would be, you know, really important for us to, you know, put some accelerated programming out there for our students that, you know, really could benefit from that. So other than that, I appreciate the updates, and I'm thrilled to hear that the trips went off without incident and that everyone seemed to really enjoy themselves. So thank you, Mrs. Regan.
Well, and my only comment, also on the art show, phenomenal and heavy lift, I think, for the teachers that put that together. So another thank you, another congratulations, Mrs. Chenanovich, on your new position. And that's really it. And I completely agree with Mr. Sullivan on the summer program, so thank you very much.
Agreed, you're welcome.
Mr. Libby?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My update will be a brief sort of response to a request that Mr. Sullivan presented at our last meeting for some sort of data and information on open meeting law violation and public record requests that we've been receiving here in the district for the past few years. At the last meeting, Mr. Sullivan had requested that data, and as luck would have it, on the very next day, we received another public record request asking for associated legal costs with our, that are related to those two topics, open meeting law and public record requests. So we dug out those legal bills, combed through those bills, and identified costs associated with open meeting law violations and public record requests dating back through calendar year 2020. And would just like to share those results with you tonight. In calendar year 2020, public record requests that required legal assistance, the district had nine incidents for a total of $750. Open meeting law violations, just one, for $125. During calendar year 2021, public record requests jumped to 61 requests that our legal folks helped us with at a cost of $10,713. Open meeting law violations totaled 12 for $2,550. And through March 15th, the time that we looked at our legal bills through, in 2022, we've had 23 public record requests that we've had legal assistance with for a total of $2,329 and six open meeting law violations that totaled $1,875. So that's the legal piece to this, to that question, Mr. Sullivan. The piece that's really not told here is the time spent by district personnel. There's actually a few things. There are public records requests which get answered by district staff that don't require legal assistance, maybe more simpler public record requests that can get handled by our district administration directly. We're going to research those for you and be able to get back to you with some more numbers on those as well. The significant amount of time spent by district administration, the superintendent, assistant superintendent, director of special ed, some school administrators, and our clerical staff researching and compiling the information to get it to our legal team for review and final sort of approval or final say on how it should be presented for the, to answer the public record request, and then the related amount of money that that time translates into. So I didn't have the time to get into that after April vacation, since we had this request for the legal side of the equation, but I hope to be able to research and quantify that piece and be able to get back to the committee with some numbers for you in, at our June meeting. And hopefully, I'll have that for you in June.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I think it just bears repeating, the irony of, you know, the requests that you put to us, and that to receive now a public records request on that very topic the next day, and just how much administrative time that took. So it's not a simple task. First of all, you reach out to your legal team and you pull, and pull all of those invoices because they're separate. And we have to tease out every event of this because it's not, it's, you know, while they're itemized, there's other sensitive information on those invoices from our legal team. And we're talking about our lawyers, school business lawyers, and then our special ed lawyers, two separate teams. And the amount of hours that that took, both Mr. Libby, myself, and the lawyers, and then including Mr. Pelletier, and all of our administrative hours that aren't billed into that request, I think it's certainly something I'm appreciative that you've asked and that we're looking at. We're not, unlike other districts, who are looking at this issue. It is unwieldy. It's hard, I mean, the, while we apologize that we were not able to put the full report you asked for, our time was spent on another public records request and ironically, another charge to the district on doing that, right? So, I mean, for us. So I hope you can appreciate that while this was just about the legal fee, how do we quantify the cost associated with all of our time and considering that that means that's time we're not doing other things that we need to do? So I appreciate this being a continued discussion, and we'll do our best to put that in some type of report, but, you know, the real crux of the matter is this is ongoing, an ongoing challenge that we're facing as a district administrative team.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan, since this was your request, I'll start with you.
Sure. No, I appreciate it, and I look forward to the June update. Thank you, Mr. Libby and Mrs. Regan.
And Mr. Russo, you had a question?
Yeah, actually, Mr. Libby, can I just ask you to repeat? Did you say so far this year for 2022, with the 23 public records requests, the cost is $22,399? Did I hear that right?
$2,329.
$2,329.
Yep.
So, so in the three years, basically, not even three years, two years and, you know, a quarter roughly, we've had 93 public records requests totaling, again, just the legal, just to your point, Mrs. Regan, totaling almost $15,000 of legal expenses, not even counting the time that our administration has put into the district. I guess maybe the one thing I'm just going to echo that I said last Thursday during our special school committee meeting is that we need to get back to our educational roots for this district. And by bombarding our administration with 93 public records requests, that does not allow this district to focus on what is the most important aspect of why we're all here. I look forward to the report as well, as Mr. Sullivan said. I'm a little taken aback by some of that information, but thank you for sharing.
Yep.
Bea Joni Smith?
No, no questions at this time, I think. Both of my colleagues have.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes, so at our last regular committee meeting, I did ask a rhetorical question of what could we be doing as a committee to address these problems and get to the core of the matter on these requests? I do just want to emphasize that the conversations, at least from my perspective, on this side of the table, have been productive. We're open to working through these problems and sharing information in a more productive, less time-consuming, less expensive way. And I just want to encourage people that are making these requests, while that is your right to do so, just urge them to maybe take a shot at reaching out and trying to do this in a more productive, fruitful way than what we have been doing.
May I, Madam Chair, through, may I respond? And I thoroughly agree with you, Mr. Parsons. Most recently, I have one family, if you will, that I'm reaching out to often because I'm, I think we're on our ninth public records request by the same family, and honestly, that within each request are potentially five requests. And it's really not getting us to the solution. And I totally agree. This is, there are a few people who've really are putting in these 90-some auto more requests. So I agree that we could solve problems better or get to the information people are looking for, the questions they have, you know, through conversations. It's certainly the style I prefer, and, you know, I think we can solve problems. The public record request itself is not doing that.
I don't really have much more to add. I echo what you're saying, Mr. Parsons. I think, you know, many of us, it's a very new community, a committee, so I think if we can be helpful in some way, I think I'd like to offer that to people. But certainly, you know, we can just keep working towards getting to a better place, I think, so that people will reach out to us first. But thank you, Mr. Libby, for taking the time.
Madam Chair, if I may, I had one more update I owed the committee. Mr. Parsons had asked a question at the last meeting also about our free and reduced lunch numbers. And I think I gave you a quick, off-the-head number after the meeting, but I did get the number from our food services folks. This year, as of April 8th, 2022, district-wide was 762 in the low-income, free and reduced lunch category. And last year, April 1st, 2021, was 624. So the fact that we are, a lot of lunches are free this year, hasn't impacted our numbers Those are fed to us basically by the state now. It's not so much us asking. We get the numbers from the state agencies that are in charge of those programs. So the fact that our numbers are rising is, will be potentially good news for our grant programs, but potentially not good news for our families.
Okay, Mr. Parsons?
Just thank you for getting back to us on that. Just glad to hear that we have that data and, you know, we can budget and get the support we need. Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan?
Nothing, thank you.
No questions.
Mr. Russo?
No questions at this time, thank you.
And just to clarify, so, Mr. Libby, these numbers are not reflective of the applications any longer?
No, they're, they come from the state to us, and then we, I think Deb, Ms. Mugford has a way to verify through questionnaires with the family, and we can reach out to see if there are more families that feel they may be eligible, but the bulk of the families that are involved come to us from the state agencies.
Okay, all right, thank you so much. So I don't have any further questions. I guess we will move on now to our school committee member reports. Mr. Sullivan with the elementary school committee.
Great, thank you. I attended my first meeting two weeks ago.
Madam Chair, if I can, can we vote on the consent agenda before you move on to that item?
Oh, oh, right, right.
To accept all of that information?
I'm sorry, you had covered the item, so. So, and then we vote to accept the content, correct? Is there a motion to?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as is.
And a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, and all in favor? Please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, and the motion passes with the consent agenda. Thank you very much. And sorry, Mr. Sullivan?
Great, no problem. I attended my first meeting a couple of weeks ago. The project is still on time and on budget in spite of ridiculously rising construction costs, which is great to hear. There's still a healthy contingency balance. We are meeting tomorrow, so I'll look forward to presenting another report in our June meeting.
Great, thank you. And for the CPAC, Mr. Parsons?
So at the next CPAC May meeting, that is on Thursday, May 19th, they'll be holding their annual elections. On Friday, May 20th at 6:00 p.m., there's a family engagement get-together at Strongwater Farm, and anyone that is interested is welcome to join the CPAC there. The CPAC also wants to thank families who showed their support for educators by writing teacher appreciation email cards. Over 100 personalized staff member messages were sent. That is the end of my report.
Great. And I will go to Mr. Sullivan on the wellness committee, because we'll get to our appointments.
Yep, we are meeting on June 1st.
Okay.
I do have one other update, I'm sorry. I know the, having a discussion with you and some informal discussion with the Board of Health, we are also going to add a, well, the Board of Health is going to add a member, Mrs. Regan. We thought that would be a nice piece and a good fit for the wellness, so we look forward to whoever that Board of Health, town Board of Health elected official will be to join us, not only on June 1st, but moving forward.
Thank you. And I'll stay with you on policy.
Boy, a busy guy. We, the Policy Review Committee, I believe that's what we refer to it, we've got a lot of work to do. I'm not going to sugarcoat it. So we've earmarked the next four Tuesdays, May 17th, May 24th, May 31st, and June 7th. I'm not exactly sure on the time yet, but those are the dates. They'll most likely be in the afternoon. We're going to take a look at all of the policies. It's been a little bit since we've done that, so our meeting on the 17th will probably be just organizational in trying to get the information from Mrs. Regan and from Gil Johnson, and a plan of approach to take to see what policies we should get to first. So that's what I have with the Policy Subcommittee.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And then next up on here would be policy changes, proposals, and adoptions. I assume there's nothing here. And school committee member reports, we did in old business. We have an open meeting law complaint, which has been returned back to us, so I just wanted to make sure we circle back on this. This was an open meeting law complaint that was filed on a letter dated March 8th, and this was, is in result of our meeting on February 9th. So I'm going to read a little bit of it. I think I'll do a little less than I did last time, but I do think it's important that we share what the finding was. So this was a complaint by Ms. Healy alleges that the committee violated the open meeting law during its February 9th meeting, when on two occasions Chairman Keith Sullivan whispered to another member of the committee in a matter that was not audible to the public. Following our review, we find that the committee did not violate the open meeting law in the ways alleged. After reviewing the original complaint, the committee's response to the complaint in a video of the committee's February 9th meeting. Open meeting law requires that meetings of public bodies be open and accessible to the public, except when meeting an executive session. A meeting is defined in relevant part as a deliberation by a public body with respect to any matter within the body's jurisdiction. The complaint alleges that on two occasions- body's jurisdiction. The complaint alleges that on two occasions during the committee's February ninth meeting, Chair Sullivan whispered to another member of the committee in a manner that was not audible to the public, in violation of the open meeting law. Specifically, the complaint alleges that the Chair Sullivan whispered to committee member Nicholas Parsons that there was five minutes remaining for public comment, who then announced to the attendees what was whispered to him. The complaint also alleges that later in the meeting Chair Sullivan whispered something inaudible to committee member Bridget Garabedian, who did not announce what Mr. Sullivan whispered to her. We find that neither instance violated the open meeting law. Because the open meeting law applies to communications between or among a quorum of a public body, the communication between less than a quorum does not constitute deliberation, as long as the communication is not relayed to a quorum of members in a serial manner outside of a posted meeting. After reviewing the video recording of the February ninth meeting, we find that the first alleged instance of whispering Chair Sullivan telling Mr. Parsons that there were five minutes remaining was clearly audible even prior to Mr. Parsons repeating it to the public. Therefore, this comment did not violate the open meeting law. Furthermore, even if the comment had been inaudible, a brief communication from Chair Sullivan to another member that did not include or reach a quorum would not constitute deliberation, subject to the open meeting law in any event. For this reason, we find that the second alleged instance of whispering where the meeting video shows Mr. Sullivan leaned over and whispered to Ms. Garabedian in a manner that was not all audible to the public also did not violate open meeting law. We find that the committee did not violate the open meeting law. We now consider the complaint addressed by this determination to be resolved. This is posted in the packet. If anybody's interested, there's some, you know, more information in between, but that's the gist of it. So I'd like to open this up for any comments by our committee. I'll start with, uh, Mr. Sullivan.
Uh, no comments.
Mr. Parsons?
Some useful information, and I appreciate the AG clarifying on this.
Mr. Russo?
Uh, no comments this time.
And Mrs. Be a Joni Smith?
No comments.
I have no comments myself. So, moving on, we have, um, oh, we have our appointments. So with the reorganization of our committee, there's also a reorganization of our Subcommittee assignments. So in the packet, we have the collective bargaining committees, uh, should we need to meet, uh, for collective bargaining with any of these committees again. Custodians would be Nick Parsons and Rich Russo. Educational support personnel would be Keith Sullivan and Bridget Garabedian. Food services is Keith Sullivan and Rich Russo. Nurses, Keith Sullivan and Kayla Be a Joni Smith. Secretaries, Bridget Garabedian and Kayla Be a Joni Smith. Tag is Nick Parsons and Rich Russo. The TTA is Bridget Garabedian and Keith Sullivan. The elementary school building committee, we voted at our last meeting for Keith Sullivan to represent our committee on that. And the Policy Subcommittee is Keith Sullivan and Bridget Garabedian. CPAC is Nick Parsons and Kayla Be a Joni Smith. And the Wellness Advisory Committee is Rich Russo and Keith Sullivan. Any comments in the committee?
Uh, Madam Chair, can I just add under, uh, business item number B?
Uh huh.
Um, are you looking to, um, appoint someone to the reuse committee?
Yes. So, yeah, that was next. So.
Okay.
Currently, on the North Street and Treyhan Elementary Reuse Committee, Ms. Be a Joni Smith and myself both sit on that committee. Um, I was appointed as a resident-at-large. And then last year, I, the committee had voted to have me assume the position of the school committee representative. So now I find that we're in a similar situation this year. Well, I'm the school committee representative, and, uh, Ms. Be a Joni Smith is the, um, member at large. So I would be happy to step down from that committee, and if it wills the board and Mrs. Be a Joni Smith, have her assume a similar, um, process that I had last year to assume the school committee position. So I would entertain conversation or motions at this time.
Sure. I, I think it's a wonderful idea if Mrs. Smith would like to do that. I think there's some continuity there, some consistency. She's been on the committee. Um, I've been the chair. It's a tremendous amount of work. Um, I certainly know that you could certainly benefit from having, uh, somebody else represent in that capacity, um, as being someone who did it prior. So, um, if it's okay with you, uh, Kayla, I'd be more than happy to support that. But I'd be encouraged to hear from my colleagues first, and obviously hope that you would wanna continue that work if it is the case.
Yeah, just to save you and everybody else the time, I absolutely would love to stay on that committee. Um, it's been something that I've enjoyed doing. I, I volunteered and stepped up for that before the school committee position. So I would, I would love to be able to stay there and continue the forward momentum that we've had recently. So, um, if everybody else is.
That's great. No comments from me.
Any comments?
I have no comments. Thank you for volunteering.
All right. So is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor of, um, having Ms. Be a Joni Smith, uh, be the appointed school committee representative on the Treyhan-North Street Reuse Committee? Please say aye.
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 Opposed? No opposed. So the motion passes. Thank you. And thank you for the reminder, Mr. Sullivan. Um, then we have the elementary school student handbook. Mrs. Regan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, you've have the, um, two thousand, uh, I'm sorry, twenty-two, twenty-three pre-K through grade four elementary handbook. As you know, this is a collaborative approach with all of our four elementary schools. You have the change memo in front of you and the proposed handbook. Um, I, I would add pursuant to the update I gave you at the end of my report, we will be editing the Heathbrook principal name, um, within this handbook. So that would be one last bullet on this change memo. We have Principal Terry Gerish of the Doing School, and again, Principal Felicia Chenanovich here from the Heathbrook School. If you have any questions, this, uh, we certainly would like a vote or your blessing on this handbook, um, after you have an opportunity for any questions you might have.
Mr. Russo, did you have any questions?
Um, I mean, just the only question I did have, um, was from a handbook standpoint of content, would anything change for next year with the center school coming online mid-year?
We have, Mr. Russo, we actually took ask and took that into consideration and made sure that whatever we have at K four, those, those guidelines will continue and follow right along the center school.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Questions?
No, no questions. I read through it, and I think it's great.
Okay. And Mr. Parsons?
I have no questions.
Mr. Sullivan?
Um, just a comment to Mr. Russo through you. Um, we no longer, years ago, when I first started on the committee, there was individual handbooks for individual schools. A consolidation has taken place. So, um, part of answering your question, Mr. Russo, is the same handbook is going on at the, uh, Doing School as the North Street and the Treyhan. So.
Great.
Just wanted to clarify.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and I don't have any questions, um, but I do have a comment. In last year, uh, I think what we voted as a committee to do, um, just for the ease of getting information out when it needed to, was that we had voted, um, to give the superintendent the authority to make changes to the handbook with, um, you know, you know, the request that you do update the committee for any changes that are made. Um, I'm comfortable with that. I don't know how my colleagues feel. Thank you.
I'm okay with that.
So is there a motion to allow the superintendent to make those changes?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right. So all in favor to give the superintendent the authority to make changes to this handbook as needed, um, with the update to then come to the su- the school committee as, as appropriate? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? So that motion passes.
And I'd also like to make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three PK through four elementary handbooks.
A second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 No opposed? Motion passes. Great. Thank you.
The next item on new business, Madam Chair, is the, uh, two thousand twenty-three school committee meeting schedule. Um, this is for the calendar year of two thousand twenty-three. I know it's only been in your packet for a couple of days. Uh, this, this schedule will need a vote of the committee, or we can certainly, um, put that vote off until June if members of the committee still need to look at these dates with their own calendars.
Sorry to interrupt. I wanted to say thank you to our elementary principals for being here. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate your help.
Sorry, Mrs. Regan. Um, are there any questions or comments from anybody on the schedule?
Yeah, I'm wide open for twenty twenty-three.
That's awesome. So far away off, but yes. I have no questions either. Thank you. And this is just a draft, or do we vote on this tonight?
We certainly can revisit a certain date if we need. You can see that one of the, um, items is asterisk, is the specialty meeting. Clearly, that needs a vote of approval at the Board of Selectmen, um, meeting. But, um, what's, what's helpful is that we put these dates in our school calendar, and then we avoid them, right? We'll make sure that they're noted so that the schools can plan appropriately. So it's always a draft, as in that if we have to move something for a particular reason, we could, you know, with, with due notice. But I'd, I'd, if, if we look at it like that, we can. But otherwise, we'll schedule out these dates throughout the, uh, calendar year.
All right. So I'm, I'm comfortable, um, if there's a motion to vote for these dates at this time.
I'll make a motion to accept the calendar as is.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
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 With no opposed, this motion passes to approve the twenty-twenty-three meeting schedule for the school committee. Passes.
All right. And the next item on our new business agenda is, uh, will also require a vote of the committee. Now, you may think this is a deja vu. Um, at the last meeting, you did vote, uh, that I would serve as the Tewksbury, uh, Board of Director Member to the Valley Collaborative. This vote that you'll be taking tonight is for next school year, that I will, uh, serve as the Board of Director Member from Tewksbury, um, for the Valley Collaborative. As I said, it does require a vote of the committee.
Okay. And is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
Okay. So if, all in favor of, of, um, voting and for Mrs. Uh, Regan to be appointed the Valley Collaborative Board of Directors for July one, twenty twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. And the motion passes. Thank you. And then I think, Mr. Libby, you're next up.
Sure.
Thank you.
So this, um, speaking of deja vu, this may look familiar to you. This was in our, uh, a, a similar document. It was in our April package as well. Um, it was a, uh, cha- I, I was presenting some changes to our budget as we, uh, continually analyze and update our need, the needs of the district and, uh, assess and assign, um, resources to meet those needs. Uh, I had planned on, um, presenting a, a different budget at town meeting, um, at the May fifth, uh, May second town meeting. Um, but as I was talking to, uh, Mr. Montori, the town manager, during the day, uh, before the school committee meeting, um, he had told me that the town meeting warrant has already been out to print, has already been out in the mail, and our numbers were kinda locked in at where they were as far as salary, operating, and capital outlay. So at the April meeting, we, um, kinda pulled back on this, uh, this information, uh, at that meeting. And in order to keep the town meeting, um, document correct and updated and appropriate to be voted on at the town meeting, with the thought that we could amend the budget at a later date with approval of the school committee. So that's what's, um, before you now. Um, the changes, uh, have been brought about through, um, different needs of the district that have come, come up, and different, um, ways to fund those, uh, those needs as shown as in, um, below the, in the bottom half of the table as decreases to the budget. So the increases, uh, represent the needs in the top half of the document. The decreases, uh, are show the ways to fund those needs. The bottom line is it changes our salary operating and capital outlay numbers as shown on the second page, which is slightly different than the, um, numbers that were approved at the town meeting. So, um, I was requesting, uh, if it pleased the committee, uh, school committee vote to, uh, amend those numbers to these numbers as we move forward into next school year.
Any questions or comments, Mr. Russo?
Uh, none at this time.
And Mrs. Be a Joni Smith?
No questions.
Mr. Parsons?
Just wanna thank you for all your work on this, Mr. Libby. Um, and with the town finance committee and, yeah, town manager and everyone over at the town hall. Um, it's a tight walk that you did very gracefully. So, thank you.
Thanks.
All right. And Mr. Sullivan?
Uh, I'm in full support, uh, Mr. Libby. Thank you for your work.
All right. So this is a, um, a vote regarding money. So we're gonna take a roll call vote if you, uh, to approve this fiscal, um, what are we calling? Is it a budget transfer for fiscal year twenty twenty-three? Um, if you, Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Should we get a motion?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Do we have a motion for this? Sorry.
I'll make that motion, yes.
And a second?
A second.
Okay. And Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mrs. Be a Joni Smith?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So the motion passes for the budget transfer fiscal year twenty twenty-three as presented.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, everyone, for your patience with me tonight. Worked through some of these logistics. Um, and so we'll now go on to school committee matters of interest, and I will start with.
I have one more matter of new, uh, business?
Oh, you do? I'm so sorry. Yes.
I do. No, there, there's a lot on the agenda. I appreciate your patience with me as well. Um, this last matter of new business does not require a vote. It's informational only. But for our, um, viewers and for the committee, um, it's important to note, this notice, um, of public comment pertaining to proposed amendments to the Massachusetts Comprehensive Assessment System, MCAS, and Standards for Competency Determination Regulations, um, is presented before you. It's a condition of our graduation, uh, requirements set forth by, uh, the state. So this proposed amendment would actually establish a new competency determination standard for English Language Arts, Mathematics, Science, Technology Engineering for the students in classes of twenty twenty-six through twenty twenty-nine. That would be our incoming freshman next year. It's important to note, I'm not going to read through this entire amendment. I shared it with you as a hard copy so you could see some of the changes. And, um, potentially what this does is, um, the, the link also to the document digitally is included, is it allows parents and community members and our educators to read through these amendments and provide written comment on these proposed, um, amendments to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education via either email, a call, or, um, submitting that written, um, document to them. So I urge people, especially those who, uh, may have freshmen or high school students impacted, uh, by this change, to read through the amendments and provide that, that comment to the department, um, as you see fit. So again, I provide this as information, and, uh, welcome the committee to, uh, look through and, uh, contact me if you have any questions as well.
Thank you very much. This is very helpful to the community. Um, okay. So now, school committee matters of interest, and I will start with Mrs. Be a Joni Smith.
Thank you. Um, I have a few things that I just wanted to bring up, um, some of which we covered already, so I won't repeat those. Um, there's a bunch of different things coming up in the, uh, last half or last quarter, tenth, what are we at? At the end of the school year? Last fifty days or so? How many do we have? Um, but, um, some of the fun things that are happening that I just wanna draw our attention to are Saturday, May twenty-first, the Heathbrook-Treyhan and Doing-North Street, um, PACs are hosting a Savers Fund Drive. There'll be a, um, U-Haul truck parked at the Heathbrook School from nine A. M. until one P. M., where, um, folks can drop off donated soft goods tied up in a standard kitchen trash bag. And the PACs will drive that stuff down to Savers and get a donation, and they'll vote on making, um, a donation to a local charity, um, with the funds that are raised from doing that. It's another effort to work collaboratively across town, um, getting the PACs together. There are several field days taking place. These kids, we've talked about a couple of times, um, getting them outside more. Some of these field days have been extended to full-day field days, so it's great. They're gonna have some fun, um, time outside. Uh, tons of volunteers, tons of volunteer hours put into these field days. Um, the Treyhan Schools, uh, third and fourth grade are attending, uh, field trip in the next couple of weeks. Those kids are super excited to get on a bus and head down to the zoo. Um, the Doing and North Street are hosting their first fun run. Um, it's on June ninth. Um, I, I have been to them, and I can say that they are awesome. And I encourage everybody, if you have time, to stop into the Doing or the North Street during the, that day to see how much fun those things can be. And then the last thing I have is that on the last day of school, uh, the PACs, um, from Heathbrook-Treyhan, Doing-North Street, and the Ryan are working with Jenny- Dewing-North Street, and the Ryan are working with Jenny Welch with the Tewksbury Police Department and the Tewksbury Fire Department to potentially put on a fun event on that last day of school that will take place at Livingston. They're working out the details, but it is something fun to maybe look forward to on that last day of school.
Thank you. You're welcome. Mr. Russo?
Well, my colleague sure had a lot. No, that's great. You covered a lot. No, that's great. Actually, just one thing from my end. I actually just want to give a shout-out to Mia Gaglione and Ava Gilligan on their sixth-place finish at the International DECA Conference in Atlanta. You know, I know that there were many other students that also traveled there, you know, and were able to, you know, partake and compete in the national or international competition. But for those two women in particular finishing sixth place, representing really Massachusetts really at that point, it was just such a huge accomplishment to them, and, you know, hopefully at some point, maybe we can even get them in here again. We'll, you know, we'll see what the committee decides. But just a big shout-out to them. That's a huge accomplishment.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan?
Yes. First, another thanks to our student athletes who came in today and our families. There've been some tough meetings with COVID and all that's going on, and it was really nice to, once again, just have not only those student athletes, but the robotic team in here, and getting back to, like my colleague stated earlier, the work that we all sign up for, which is really doing all we can to help kids in this district. So that's not possible if they don't come. I'm glad that people are feeling much more comfortable now, and they're able to come to meetings. So thanks again to those people. Thanks to the many students, families, community members, and especially the Beautification Committee. If you were around Saturday, you could see all those people walking around. They go in our schools cleaning up a couple hundred bags of trash, and as I drove around Sunday, it really, it's one of my favorite days of the year, because the town is really clean. So kudos to those people. They've been doing that for years and years and years. So it's a nice thing that you can do. Everyone wants to help. You know, that's a wonderful thing the first Saturday in May. I encourage you, I've taken my family out many years. It's a nice activity, even if you just put an hour in. If everyone puts an hour or two in, it really makes a difference in how our town looks. So thanks for all those people that do that work, and for those who organize. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parsons?
So it's a fun part of the year with graduation and prom and celebrating lots of successes. I just wanted to encourage all of our students who are wrapping up their education in Tewksbury to make smart decisions and stay safe. Other than that, I have no other matters of interest.
Thank you. My own personal matters of interest, I saw, there was some fantastic things that happened with the drama program in our district this month. Mamma Mia was spectacular. There's not even the words to describe how fantastic it was. Flawless performances, the costumes, the sets. It was a really, really great experience. I wanted to say thank you to Mrs. Pellegrino, Mr. Moffett, for their hard work bringing that together. I happened to also notice that it looks like they're running a summer theater program for students entering grades 1 through 4. It looks like it's running July 11th to 15th. It's called Tiny Triple Threat. That warms my heart to see that, so I really appreciate that they're doing that. That's fantastic. Thank you. And then the wind play, The Internet Is Distract: Oh Look a Kitten, was put on for the community. It went over very well, very well received. People were really, really pleased with it. But then not only did they stop there, but they went on to competition, which is pretty significant. And they actually brought home a gold medal. Several students, I think it was four, were all recognized for their accomplishments in that show. So I'd like to recognize them, and Mr. De Prima and his team for all their hard work. So again, more things that are happening in our schools that I'm very grateful to see happening and doing well. So with that, our future School Committee meetings, June 8, 2022, July 20, 2022, August 17, 2022, which is also the School Committee Admin Workshop at 3:00 PM, followed by the regular meeting. Then our future Subcommittee and Advisory Committee dates, we have the Elementary School Building Committee, which is meeting tomorrow, May 12th, and then on June 9th. We have the Tewksbury CPAC Business Meeting, which is going to be on May 19th, where they will also hold their elections, and on June 16th. The Tewksbury CPAC School Safety Subcommittee is to be determined. The Wellness Advisory Committee, you said was June 1st?
June 1st. I can move here.
Yep. And Policy Subcommittee, we already covered those dates, starting on the 17th for the following four Tuesdays. Are there any future agenda items that anybody would like to mention or bring up? No? Okay, seeing none. I will ask to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
And a second? Ah, second. I'm sorry. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we will adjourn at 8:15 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you.